It was wonderful.
I think it was wonderful.
The May tenth, two thousand and sixteen regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section thirty-three, thirteen point one five of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner.
Here.
Ms. Jisling.
Present.
Mr. Shaw.
Present.
Mr. Tuttle.
Present.
Ms. Miller.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome everyone to the May tenth, two thousand and sixteen regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System, Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available on the website for prior viewing the Sunday before the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes, and please address all questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on the Time Warner Cable Channel ninety-six point nine six in Mentor and the channel ninety-six point two-two in Mentor on the Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Please place your mobile phones on silent at this time. Approval of the minutes from the April twelfth, two thousand and sixteen meeting. So moved. Second.
I would like to point out that we took the liberty of correcting two typographical errors from the original set of minutes distributed. The first was on page four-twenty correcting an account code that was incorrectly presented, and the second's on page four-twenty-five under unclaimed funds. We discovered that the amount for the third item should have been sixty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents instead of fifty-five. We took the liberty of correcting those typos in the minutes, the final minutes presented to you.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Upstee.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have the first hearing of the public, and that's items dedicated to those who wish to address the board on items on the agenda, anything on the agenda. Okay, thank you. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of consent agenda items five A-one through five A-two.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, tonight we are happy to recognize many of our students who have earned awards and excelled in state competition. Great turnout tonight. We're excited that we get to recognize a lot of our kids here in Mentor and thank our parents and grandparents for coming. Some of these students will now move on to national competition, and as a school and a community, we couldn't be prouder of our kids. We'll start with Mr. Porter, joined by Mr. Shaw, who will recognize the Shore Middle School students who competed in the regional competition and also qualified for the national competition in the National History B.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller, Mr. Wilson. During the winter, five Shore Middle School students took an online line qualifying exam for the National History B. This competition allowed the students to test their historical knowledge on world and U.S. history and trivia of all kinds. All five students advanced to the regional level held in Michigan last month. Two have advanced to the national competition to be held in June in Chicago. Tonight, we honor our regional qualifiers, two of whom are here with us this evening. We would also like to congratulate and thank their coach, Mrs. Harper, for her leadership. If she's here, she certainly can come up on stage along with Mr. Baker, the principal. Students, when you come up on stage, please come up the stairway to my right to receive your award, and then I would invite you to shake the hands with our Board of Education members. And our regional qualifiers for the History B, Alyssa Hardman and Hunter Wellman.
(APPLAUSE).
It's always hard to go first.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mr. Porter and Mr. Shaw will now recognize the Power of the Pen state qualifiers.
Power of the Pen is a writing competition that allows students to compete and showcase their writing skills on different prompts and topics. The greatest challenge is to advance beyond local and regional levels to reach state competition. Tonight, we recognize four students with remarkable performances. I would ask the students to proceed the same way as the last set of students did, to receive your award and shake hands with our board members. First, from Ridge Middle School, Power of the Pen, if the principal, Mrs. Blackburn, is here, or the advisor, Mrs. LaRiche, or Ms. Diaz, would come up and join us on stage. Honorable mention from Ridge goes out to Amanda Cola.[424.02][424.02](APPLAUSE). And we have a state qualifier from Ridge, Emily Jarvis.[428.12][428.12](APPLAUSE). And from Shore Middle School, we would invite back up Mr. Baker, the principal. I don't know if Ms. Compton is here, who's the coach. Power of the Pen, I know one of their state qualifiers couldn't be here this evening. I hope the other one is able to make it, Hallie Sell.[461.62][461.62](APPLAUSE).
Next, Mr. Porter, Mr. Shaw will recognize the PTA Reflections Contest winners.
The Ohio PTA, through National PTA, holds an annual cultural arts program called Reflections. Children in preschool through grade twelve are encouraged to create and submit works of art in six areas: literature, visual arts, photography, dance choreography, film, video, and musical composition. Children are encouraged or are recognized for their creativity in portraying yearly themes. This year's theme was "Let Your Imagination Fly." Reflections winners, we would like to recognize this evening. Again, we would invite you up on stage here. For the Ohio PTA honorable mention category, from Shore Middle School, Zachary Perrier for Middle School Division for Visual Arts. Zachary's here.[541.12][541.12](APPLAUSE). And in that same category, under the Primary Division for Literature, from Fairfax Elementary, Tyler Rhodes. We would invite up Ms. Pern and Tyler's.[551.12][551.12](APPLAUSE). Ohio PTA Award of Merit, from Shore Middle School, Middle School Division for Photography, Jason Dewey. Mr. Baker.[568.12][568.12](APPLAUSE). And the Ohio PTA Award of Excellence, for the Intermediate Division for Visual Arts, from Fairfax, Devon Ambrose. And Immediate Division for Literature, also from Fairfax, Manav Malik. I would invite up Ms. Pern, also, the principal.[588.04][588.04](APPLAUSE). And one more Award of Excellence for the Middle School Division for Visual Arts, from Ridge Middle School, Brianna Yee.[607.12][607.12](APPLAUSE).
Next, Mr. Porter will be joined by Mr. Baker and Mr. Wade, along with Mr. Shaw, to present the winners of the R.A. Horn and Franklin B. Walter Award for Outstanding Student and Outstanding Educators.
The R.A. Horn Award is presented to one exemplary special education student from each of Ohio's sixteen state support team regions. This award was established twenty-five years ago by the Ohio Department of Education in honor of the late Dr. Raymond A. Horn, Assistant Superintendent of Public Instruction Emeritus. This prestigious award recognizes students' remarkable performance. Acknowledged as a national leader in the field of special education, Dr. Horn devoted more than sixty years of service to improving the quality of life and learning for students with special needs. The Outstanding Student from Mentor in this category this year for the R.A. Horn Award is Matthew Best from Shore Middle School.[706.73][706.73](APPLAUSE). Similarly, there is an annual regional award to honor an educator or team who has made outstanding contributions by improving access to and progress in the general curriculum for children and youth with special needs. This award honors the memory of Dr. Franklin B. Walter, the former superintendent of the State of Ohio, who served in that role from nineteen seventy-seven to nineteen ninety-one. We have two teaching recipients who not only make tremendous individual contributions in the area of special education, but they also serve their students better because of their teamwork. I don't know if either was able to make it tonight, Mr. Stephen Garvin and Mr. Keith Murphy.[767.31][767.31](APPLAUSE). Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. All right, next, it's my pleasure to recognize Mentor High School student Vishnu Nastala. For his many academic and service awards, Mr. Wade and Mr. Shaw will make the presentations.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, it's my pleasure to ask Vishnu Nastala to join me on stage.[790.12][790.12](APPLAUSE). I would also ask that Jeffrey Allen, the Director of Education and Public Programs from the Malts Museum of Jewish Heritage, also join me on stage tonight as we recognize Vishnu for one of his awards. Tonight, we have the pleasure of recognizing Vishnu for many awards, so for each one, I'll give a brief explanation. Of the one point five million entrants, some fifty thousand of the highest PSAT National Merit Qualifying Test Selection Index scores qualify for recognition in the National Merit Program. This spring, Vishnu and three of his classmates, who we previously recognized, were named as four of the fifteen thousand students who are named as National Merit finalists. Congratulations on this award, Vishnu.[834.43][834.43](APPLAUSE). If that wasn't impressive enough, let me share with these stats. There are approximately three point three million seniors who will be graduating here this year. Of that number, there are only forty-seven hundred students who were identified as candidates in the U.S. Presidential Scholars Competition. Of that forty-seven hundred, only six hundred and eighty-nine are named as semifinalists to be selected as the final one hundred and sixty-one students, who will be awarded one of the most prestigious honors to any graduating senior, the honor of being named a U.S. Presidential Scholar. Yes, you guessed it, Vishnu was recently named as one of our nation's top six hundred and eighty-nine students when he was notified as a U.S. Presidential Scholar semifinalist, and we wish him luck as he continues on in the final category.[881.97][881.97](APPLAUSE). Many may remember Vishnu for his ability in the spelling bees, and in his eighth-grade year, he did qualify for the National Spelling Bee, and it was no surprise to me that in his fourth year, taking the American Legion, Americanism and Government tests, that he aced the test and was the winner for the State of Ohio in the American Legion's American Government Test, which is administered by our American Legion Post three fifty-two. So Vishnu earned a perfect score, and he won a trip to Washington, D.C. So Vishnu, congratulations on that honor as well.[917.43][917.43](APPLAUSE). If you weren't starting to feel bad enough about yourself already, Vishnu also won the -- his hard work and dedication exceeds the classroom, as demonstrated through his countless hours of community service at the Fairport Harbor Senior Center, where he has offered weekly technology classes to seniors, citizens. His altruistic endeavors helped him be named a runner-up for this year's two thousand and sixteen Prudential Spirit of Community Award, and that has well-qualified him for the President's Volunteer Service Award, which he's in the running for. So Vishnu, again, congratulations on your service.[964.43][964.43](APPLAUSE). I had the proud honor of attending a event last April, this past month, Stop the Hate is a contest that celebrates Northeast Ohio's sixth through twelfth graders, who take action to create a more accepting, inclusive society. The Malts Museum Initiative challenges young people to consider the impact of intolerance and the role of the individual affecting change. This year's Vishnu's essay and resulting presentation of his essay earned him third place and a ten thousand dollar scholarship that Mr. Allen has graciously agreed to present him here tonight.[1007.02][1007.02](APPLAUSE). Vishnu, we're very proud of you and all your hard work. If you would please now shake the hands with board members, we appreciate it.[1031.12][1031.12](APPLAUSE).
Okay, next, Mr. Wade and Mr. Shaw will recognize the winners of the Coz Ohio Tech Competition.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson. I'd ask that Mr. Ramsey join me on stage. Supported by the Cozy Northeast Ohio Software Association, sponsors an annual tech week to support local tech community. The culmination of this week is the awards banquet, which recognizes Northeast companies for their leadership and innovation. The high school cool tech challenges, the high school part recognizing students who are asked to leverage software and information technology to create a unique app, website, or mobile website they decided to work on with their classroom advisors. I would ask the advisor, Mr. Ramsey, to help me in recognizing our very own Omar Mansour and Ragav Malik, who won this year's event.[1088.97][1088.97](APPLAUSE).
state competition. Every year, we're pleased with how well our students do in this competition, and this year, we couldn't be more proud. Mr. Porter, along with Mr. Shaw, will introduce the advisors and students who are able to be with us tonight, and I think we're going to start with Memorial.
Good evening again. Again this year, our middle school teams have excelled on a state level in the science Olympiad competition. Students develop their expertise in different areas of science and test their skills and knowledge in numerous individual events against students from other schools. As individual events are completed, team scores are generated. All three of our middle schools qualified for states in Columbus this year, with Ridge finishing in twelfth place, Shore finishing in tenth, and Memorial finishing in fifth. One school at a time, we would like to call each team up, along with your coach and principal. Please accept your award, then please shake the board members' hands, then we would invite you to wait up here, up front, until your entire team has been recognized. Our fifth-place state finishing team, Coach, Ms. Allison Crowe, if you're here, we would invite you up on stage. And members of the team include Leon Anufrenko, Markella Bebedakis, Hannah Burke, Haley Crawford, Matthew Cromes, Anna Rudanda, Zachary Duncan, Angelina Golia, Madeline Hasek, Philip Hurgett, Corey Hoffman, Vasnavi Kasabwala, Ryan Kilkeny, Benjamin Lerner, Maria Meneri, Maura McGovern, Alec McMillan, Janelle Alex, Jude O'Toole, Salvatore Palombo, Savan Patel, Nicholas Round of applause for our Memorial team.[1376.12][1376.12](APPLAUSE). As Memorial's team members are heading back to their seats, we will begin to call up our tenth-place state team, Shore Middle School. I would ask Mr. Hickson, the coach, to come on up, and Mr. Baker. Members of the Shore team include Dylan Armao, Amanda Blatz, Quinn Daly, Corinne Duffy, Brendan Friedrich, Keaton Han, Seth Hickson, Dylan Korniski, Joshua Lining, Sarah Maines, Riley McMullin, Niyati Patel, Pavan Patel, Ella Pugh, Stephen Rahija, Kayden Rick, James Roskey, Daniel Rue, Brian Stafford, Emma Stafford, Alexandria Summers, Jackson Webster. Round of applause for our team from Shore.[1510.12][1510.12](APPLAUSE). Carol Abad would come up, and Mrs. Blackburn is welcome to return to the stage. Members of the Ridge team include Samantha Abad, Konstantinos Bogiantas, Anthony Cola, Cameron Dixon, Joshua Estock, Sarah Freeman, Timothy Funk, David Gonja, Walea Imran, Himagna Kontamala, Matthew Mogling, Janik Patel, Jayen Patel, Elise Provident, Monkarun Singh, Andrew Smith, Nicholas Smith, Sidney Tesney, Quinn Tesney, Sidharth Vagasia, Kaylee Vance, Nathan Wolford, Alex Wolick. Kontamala, Matthew Mogling, Janik Patel, Jayen Patel, Elise Provident, Monkarun Singh, Andrew Smith, Nicholas Smith, Sidney Tesney, Quinn Tesney, Siddharth Vagasia, Kaylee Vance, That's our team from Ridge Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Up next, our Mentor High School Science Olympia team has also once again excelled at state competition. Mr. Wade, along with Mr. Shaw, will make the presentation.
Madam President, members of the Board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, I'm honored to recognize our Science Olympia team who finished 3rd at a recent state competition. These are dedicated students who spend countless hours preparing and increasing their understanding and passion for science. For the past 32 years, Science Olympia has led a revolution in science education. What began as a grassroots assembly of science teachers is now one of the premier science competitions in the nation, providing rigorous standards-based challenges for nearly 6,400 teams in 50 states. Science Olympia's ever-changing event lineup provides a variety of career choices and exposure for practicing scientists and mentors. Science Olympia tournaments are academic interscholastic competitions, which consist of a series of 23 individual and team events that students prepare for during the school year. Our students work countless hours, and there's not many nights that I'm leaving at, you know, at 8:00, 8:30, 9 o'clock, and those students are still here, working on studying and preparing for their events, and for that, they should be commended. These challenging and motivational events are also well-balanced between the various science disciplines of biology, earth science, chemistry, physics, computers, and technology. There's also a balance between events requiring knowledge of science facts, concepts, processes, skills, and application. This was 21st century learning before 21st, excuse me, before 21st century learning and STEM learning and project-based learning was even discussed. These students have been doing this for 32 years, and they really truly culminate what we try to achieve here at Mentor High School. I would be remiss not to say that how proud I am of this group for their class and their tenacity that they had at the state competition. I know it was not easy for them, and we still continue to battle and fight on your behalf, and we will continue to do so until a resolution that comes up to our satisfaction as the high school principal, your superintendent, and your school board is achieved. We are still fighting for you guys, and we still wish you luck as we continue to move forward, and appreciate your guys' continued professionalism and the way that you've carried yourselves and the class that we have as a school, and I think we should all give them a round of applause, please. If I could ask Mr. Ramsey, our advisor, Mr. Sean Langham, our assistant advisor, to come up on stage and help us recognizing our students, we would appreciate that as well. Students, as I call up your names, please come down in my right, enter the stage, receive your awards, and please shake the members' hands on the board. If Sonia Anufrenko is here, please. Megan Arupenail, Gianna Baroni, Caleb Renzi, Kristen Buse, Daylin Crawford, Thomas Cromes, David Nowisky, Jonathan Nikle, Dominic Otto, Lav Patel, Ruchan Patel, Josh Pugh, Trevor Pugh, Ashley Sindalar, Abigail Suda, Nicole Smike, Venkat Saru, Jordan Thai, Kurt Tobin, Nicole Wallstrom, and Lin Chu.
Congratulations to our Science Olympia teams. Also at the high school, we are happy to recognize our Career Tech students who have earned first and second place awards, competed in state, and qualified for national competitions in various categories. Mr. Crowe and Mr. Shaw, and I believe Mr. Wade, will be making the presentations.
Madam President, members of the Board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, I'm very excited to be here this evening to recognize the accomplishments of our students in our Career Tech programs. Our Career Tech programs are highly active in our student competitions. This year, Career Tech, the Career Tech Department has had a very successful year. At this time, I'd like to introduce our students and their teachers. So, if Mr. McKnight is here this evening, would he please join me on stage? Students in our marketing and business programs competed in a CTSO called DECA. DECA is a national organization for marketing and business programs. The following students competed in a regional event at Tri-C and advanced to the state competition. So, as I say your name, please come up on stage. Danisha Allen for business services, Nicholas Ashby for marketing management, Brittany Boncha for automotive, Kenneth Cook for business law and ethics, Tom Gugliotta for business services, D'Angelo Lavert for sports and entertainment, Kaylee O'Donnell for buying and merchandising, Zachary Schaefer for financial services, Carolyn Skladar for buying and merchandising, Cal Thomason for business law and ethics. And our next two students not only qualified for states, but they also qualified for nationals. The national competition was held in Nashville, Tennessee, the last week of April. So, Jessica Linguth, who took 2nd place in the state in business finance, and Rachel Goldstein, who took 1st place in the state in retail merchandising. This was the second consecutive year that Rachel advanced to the national competition. If we can get one more round of applause for all of our marketing students. Next, we'd like to recognize a student from our early childhood program who competed in the Educator Rising competition this year down to state competition. Her name is Emily, sorry, Melanie Armstrong, and she competed in the PK book competition and also gave a speech promoting why she wants to go into education. Melanie couldn't join us this evening. Besides just competitions, this was the first year that we started internship program for students in Career Tech. We had four students that took part in this, this year. So, our program was students would come to class two days a week, and then three days a week, they would go out and they would work to hopefully, you know, either lead to a job right out of high school, or just kind of, I guess, solidify the fact that how much they liked their program and kind of improve the training that they're getting. So, at this time, we'd like to recognize James Patterson, who worked at BBS Incorporated in information technology systems. Then we had three students from our CNC manufacturing that also participated in the internship program. They are Cody Goodman. Cody interned at Astro Manufacturing. Also, Cole Radikovich, who interned at Guyer Manufacturing. And Dan Taylor, who interned at Burton Industries. Cole was actually given a full-time job because he did such an outstanding job, not actually at his company, at Guyer, but word got around what a good job he was doing, so a neighboring company came and hired him right up. So, great job, Cole. Next is students from our CAD engineering program. Would Mr. Mike Pachaska, our CAD engineering teacher, please join me on stage? Students in our CAD engineering technology class competed in the Northeast Ohio Robotics Education Program, also known as N-O-R-E-P, and they compete at Youngstown State University. This competition requires teams of students to design and build autonomous robots to perform specific tasks. This year, the robot had to initiate a Rube Goldberg, which had to have at least four energy transfers. We had two teams finish in 1st place in their events overall, and these are teams of students. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce our two teams. 1st place for winning best design, James Fordice, Jeffrey Reagan. Another one of our 1st place teams, placed 1st in best oral presentation. We have two team members, that's Dylan Holler and Tyler Walster. Congratulations to the teams and Mr. Pachaska. Next is our Skills USA participants. We have the most members of our Career Tech program that can participate in Skills USA. This, I guess, encompasses industrial, engineering, information technology, healthcare programs, cosmetology, construction. So, at this time, would Mrs. Melinda O'Connor and Mr. Ken Stopek please join me on stage? And all the following students represented us at the state competition. First, you can hold your applause to the very end, if the students can just line up on stage. Robert Brunner, who served as a voting delegate, Ariana Carter, who took 2nd place in Career Pathway Showcase, Matthew Certain, 6th place in technical computer applications, Kai Foster, who took 9th place in interactive application and game development, Justin Gallagher, who took 7th place in internetworking, Taylor Gluck, 5th place in Career Pathway Showcase, Austin Hare, 10th place in TV video production, Nicolik Jackson, who served as a voting delegate, Anthony Kadesik, took 4th place in entrepreneurship, Eric Kubish, 7th place in information technology services, Patrick Liddy, who took 3rd place in programming, Taylor Malakis, who took 2nd place in Career Pathway Showcase, Michael Monahan, who took 4th place in entrepreneurship, Robert Moyle, 4th place in entrepreneurship, Christopher Muntz, served as a voting delegate. And a lot of these are the same, you know, students were teamed up, so that's why a lot of them have the same name. Bryce Namie, 5th place, Career Pathway Showcase, Brandon Paulner, 9th place, Interactive Application and Game Development, Jasmine Ruiz, 2nd place in Career Pathway Showcase, Kyle Samus, served as a voting delegate, Nicholas Smalley, served as a voting delegate, Brendan Staten, 10th place, TV video production, Joshua Thompson, 9th place, Interactive Application and Game Development, Isaiah Tuttle, 5th place, Career Pathway Showcase, and finally, One of the great things about Career Tech that we have in our district is that we partner with neighboring districts to provide just many opportunities for our students. The next two programs that I'm going to speak about today are programs that we partner with, and we partner with Euclid City Schools for these two programs. So, first is our Culinary Arts Program, who competed, they competed in the Family Career Community Leaders of America State Competition. This is the first time we had students, a student team, qualify for the state competition. Typically, you know, we usually finish 2nd or 3rd place at the regional competition, but not this year. I like to think a lot of that had to do with our two students from Mentor High School. So, first, Isaac Mancy. Quick story about Isaac, because the second student's not here tonight. Isaac came to his interview for the program, and he brought food to it. So, the chef, great job. Still, still a Still a funny story. Chef told me right away that he's in. Our second student was Kyle Tattersden, who was unable to be here this evening. And finally, another program that we offer through our career tech department, not at Mentor High School, at Euclid High School, is our Cisco Networking Program. At this point, I'd like to recognize our two students. First, Alex Contorno, who competed and qualified for the National Cisco Networking Academy Net And finally, David Caldwell. David, come on up. So David placed first in the state in business profession, or in the BPA competition for system administration using Cisco and advanced to the national competition. Well, the national competition was a couple of weeks ago and was held in Boston, Massachusetts. And David also did very well there. He earned first place in the nation in system administration using Cisco. So congratulations to David. We should have had David bring his trophy and he had it at school yesterday, he's about as tall as him. So congratulations to David and all of our career tech kids.
Thank you, Mr. Crow. Okay, next, Mrs. Bonas and Mr. Shaw will recognize our Teachers of Critical Languages Program Exchange Teacher, Mr. Azat Hassan.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson. Last year, Mentor High was one of 23 schools across the nation awarded the Teachers of Critical Language Grant, a program of the Bureau of Educational and Cultural Affairs of the U.S. Department of State. The grant enabled us to develop an Arabic language course for our high school students by providing a fully funded exchange teacher from Egypt. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Hassan, Ms. Rue, and Ms. Hayden to the stage. We would like to commend Mr. Hassan for his commitment to Mentor Schools for the past nine months. He provided our students with a culturally rich educational experience. Mr. Hassan is a passionate, innovative teacher who engaged students on a daily basis by incorporating games, music, and technology into his lessons. Mr. Hassan also demonstrated his commitment to the Mentor Schools community by logging an impressive 160 community outreach hours over the past nine months. These hours included teaching adult language, Arabic language classes, visiting middle school social studies classrooms to present on ancient Egypt, providing after-school tutoring, presenting at PTA meetings, and volunteering at senior citizen centers. Mr. Hassan created a supportive learning environment for all of his students. Two of his students, Anna Rue and Taylor Hayden, would like to say a few words.
Hello. First, I wanted to thank Mr. Hassan for a wonderful year of teaching us more about his language and his culture. Second, about halfway through the school year, I realized that I wanted to pursue Arabic more as a career and end up majoring in it at North Carolina State. And I found out that they actually use the same textbook as we have available to us, the Alki Tab series. So I spoke with Mr. Hassan about other tips he has and things that I could do to prepare myself more for school. Well, he went above and beyond what I expected by agreeing to meet with me during 13, 14, every day, to like work through all the, like, language of the textbook, how it's set up, and just like the small things that'll help me in like my future, and also even work through some of the material and giving me extra coursework to work on. And for that, I just wanted to thank you so much for preparing me for next year and all the great things that you've done.
Good evening, everybody. I'd also like to thank Mr. Hassan. I think as a community and just as individuals in general, we don't really, we kind of assume that if you can speak a foreign language, you automatically can teach it effectively, which isn't really the case. So I wanted to thank Mr. Hassan for not just handing us a list of vocabulary and saying, okay, memorize this for next week, there'll be a quiz, but for actually sitting down with us, going over all the words and all the sentence phrases and structures to learn and incorporating games. And it's especially, it was especially cool, this experience, because we were actually able to Skype and FaceTime with students from across the world in Egypt. So that provided us with a really incalculable experience for us. So we'd like to all thank you, Mr. Hassan.
At this time, we would like to present Mr. Hassan with the Certificate of Appreciation and the Cardinal Clock so he can remember his time at Mentor. Thank you for your hard work and dedication. We look forward to your, our continued collaboration and friendship in the years to come.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It has been an honor for me to teach Arabic language and culture for the Mentor Public School District. This experience has been exceptional, and I would like to thank personally everyone who helped me. First, to start with the Board of Education, as well as Mr. Miller, Mr. Wade, Mr. Porter, Mr. Lynch, and Mr. Luciano. My friendly mentor, Mrs. Friend. My helpful and kind host, Mr. Granger. The Mentor High School staff. A special thank you to Mr. Basam Abdurrahim for being such a helpful and dear friend. I also would like to thank all of my students, and especially Jake Lynch, for helping me create class video. And the community members for providing this amazing opportunity that I will never forget. Last, but not least, I would like to extend a very special thank you to Ms. Parbanas for being so helpful, thoughtful, and kind during my stay here, and for making my stay in Mentor much more organized and enjoyable. To her, I will forever grateful. I will take back with me to Egypt the knowledge of new strategies, improved English skills, and a deeper understanding of the American cultures. But I am most proud of many friendships I have acquired this past year that will remain with me for the rest of my, for the rest of my life. Your thoughtfulness, kindness, and well wishes will always be remembered.
Thank you, Azat. Mrs. Bonas. If, before I get started next, if Mrs. Corbin could come up, and Mrs. Carver and Mrs. Trevissano, if those three could come up. Madam President and Members of the Board, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Shaw, and I would like to recognize the co-chairs and our treasurer for the Issue Three Levy Campaign for Mentor Schools. A simple thank you doesn't seem like quite enough for all the time and effort that our co-chairs put into this effort, but we really appreciate their dedication to our community, to our schools, to our kids, and to our staff. Without them, we would not have been successful. Many, many thanks.
I just want to take a few words to say that, you know, Sarah and I definitely co-chaired it, but it was really the staff and the administrators in our community who really supported this and got it passed and really supported our students. So we thank you for that.
I really enjoyed this experience. It was a lot of work, but I have to thank the voters of Mentor for all their help in helping to pass this levy. It was much needed and we're really grateful.
Well, thank you. We have one last recognition tonight, and I'd like to begin by asking Rick Lewis, Executive Director of the Ohio School Boards Association, to join us. Rick has been the leader, a very strong leader within Ohio and nationally, advocating for K-12 education and supporting school board members and school boards across the state and across the nation. Rick's professional career has been at OSBA where he has progressed and gained a deep knowledge of all the various aspects of supporting school districts and boards of education. We're very fortunate to have him here tonight to recognize our superintendent, Dr., or Mr. Matt Miller.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for sticking around for my presentation. Again, my name's Rick Lewis. I'm the Executive Director of the Ohio School Boards Association. We're a nonprofit association that was created to serve as a source of assistance, guidance, unity, and support for more than 700 publicly elected school boards in the state. And I really want to thank you for the privilege of being with you this evening. I appreciate the opportunity. I know you have a very ambitious agenda before you this evening, so I want to keep my comments brief, but I don't want the brevity to minimize the importance of what we have to say this evening. Before I do go further, though, I do want to take the privilege and the opportunity while I'm up here to congratulate again all of the students and the educators that were recognized here this evening. That's an amazing thing. Be very, very proud of your accomplishments as students and what you were able to accomplish as teachers. But I also, while I'm up here, wanted to tip my hat to all the parents and the families as well. Your names are a big part of those certificates that marched across the stage this evening, and I recognize without of the hard, all the hard work and support that you've given your, your family and your children, none of this would have happened either. So congratulations to each and every one of you. And I guess that's my point. Nothing in this world happens accidentally. And today, hard work, vision, dedication, and commitment to excellence has really become the expectation, especially in public service where good is no longer good enough. And those efforts often go unrecognized and unthanked, and especially in public service, and that should not be the case, and that's why I'm here this evening. My organization, OSBA, is part of a larger group, a national group called the National School Boards Association. It's a federation of 49 states that have come together to promote public education and represent more than 90,000 school board members across the country. Well, just this, just recently, the National School Boards Association announced its 20-to-watch honorees for 2015-16. This is a group that's recognized by their Technology Leadership Network. And I'm proud to share with all of you that your very own Matthew Miller, Superintendent of Mentor Schools, was named as one of the 20 individuals across the nation to watch. So, and this comes from over 15,000 school districts in the country. So congratulations to Matt. I need to share a little bit more about how significant it is. These education leaders from across the country are being recognized for their ability to inspire their colleagues, not just within their own school districts, but to inspire their colleagues to, to explore and embrace innovative technology solutions. And I can tell you, I've seen, I've been to a lot of school districts across the country, but nowhere do I see the vision and the passion for technology that I see here in Mentor, Ohio. It's amazing. Tom Ginsel, the Executive Director of the National School Boards Association, believes that showcasing these initiatives will help other educators in other districts learn, where there might be ways to, to use these opportunities for new approaches in approaching that, that digital use and the, just expanding throughout the country. And further, the teachers and administrators that are being recognized share this vision for learning that again should prepare students for their future success. And that's really what it's about at the end of the day. Now, this is the 10th year NSBA has recognized these individuals. These are emerging leaders, again, who are helping shape the national conversation, just not the conversation in northeast Ohio or in the state of Ohio, but across the country, shaping the national conversation about technology. And we believe these leaders will be shaping that conversation for the next 20 years. So when you think about that, it's that, that vision, you know, put in your head that vision of throwing a pebble in a pond and you see those ripples going out further and further. You'll never know where those ripples were in, or how many people were infected, infected, inspired and affected by that inspiration and that vision. Matt is one of just two superintendents in the country to be recognized for this leadership this year in embracing instructional leadership that contributes to high-quality teaching and learning. So again, we're very, very proud of Matt at OSBA. Instructional improvement is the driver behind everything that Matt at Mentor does. The district has suggestions from staff coming in, ranging from flexible learning spaces to the Genius Hour to drones. Many of these ideas have been implemented. And Matt Miller's support of blended learning and the most recent Go Open initiative keeps Mentor on the national scene. Again, you should be very proud. Since joining the district, Matt has thoroughly enhanced and embraced the school district's commitment to education, technology, and learning, especially Mentor's balanced learning approach to teaching. And I can tell you, it's respected across the entire state. When people in Columbus think about technology and public education, they think Mentor Schools. Matt has minimalized the risk that you've experienced as well by engaging with the state of Ohio as a leader of the Ohio Blended Learning Network, as well as nationally as a member of the League of Innovative Schools to learn what's working well. So again, that outreach is going coast to coast in what's, what's working and what's working in well. But in the end, it happens for two reasons. It's to make your schools a better place to learn and this community a better place to live. So on behalf of the Ohio School Boards Association, I would like to congratulate Matt Miller, again, from our officers, our trustees, our members and our staff, for, for being a leader amongst leaders and for a job well done. Your vision and your commitment to excellence will help every child succeed. And this reflects not only well on your district, but it reflects on the staff, the community, and the state of Ohio. We're all very proud of you and we look forward to working into the future with you. So Matt, I have two presentations to make. This is from OSBA, and our congratulations to you. And then the official award from the National School Boards Association, and it reads, "The National School Board Association is pleased to recognize Matthew Miller as a 20-to-watch educator for the year 2015-16. This special tribute was created to identify the emerging education technology leaders who will inspire students and help shape the national education conversation for the next 20 years." Once again, congratulations.
I would just like to say on behalf of the board how proud we are of you and our sincere congratulations to you for all of your awards. And thank you for everything you've done for Mentor.
Just really quick, I want to thank Vishnu for not being eligible for this award. But really, not yet. But in all sincerity, this speaks volumes about what our kids do every day and what our teachers do every day, and I just stay out of the way and say yes, but I want to accept on behalf of our kids and on behalf of our teachers. So thank you.
All right. At this time, I believe our Model UN students are going to make a presentation about their year this year and about what they have coming up.
I'm Lexi Mealy. He is our 2015-2016 Model UN President, and I will be next year's 2016-2017 President.
So we're just here tonight to talk a little bit about Model UN, because not many people actually know what this club's about, and we'd like to just show what kind of things we've accomplished and who we are, and hopefully outreach, and get more people to get involved in years to come. So Model United Nations is, hopefully, most of you have heard of the United Nations itself. It's basically the Congress of the world, and it's where elected officials from every nation come together and they debate different issues, including hunger and poverty and contaminated water to counterterrorism, things like that. And for Model United Nations, we basically take on a form of one of those representatives and debate our own topics. So basically, you'll go in in teams and you'll debate things like counterterrorism.
For example, we have a Security Council who will do things with counterterrorism or things with international initiatives, or you can have UNICEF who works with Children's Rights, the Human Rights Council, or at some international conferences we've been to, we've actually participated in cabinets, such as the United States Cabinets or the Russian Cabinet, to work on country-specific issues. The ultimate goal of all of this is to increase global cooperation and teach students how to see from a new global perspective so that we can encourage cooperation in years to come.
So as you see, this was our schedule from this year and then our upcoming schedule, which is what Lexi will talk about. So every year, we compete in our novice competitions in the fall and the spring, hosted by the Cleveland Council of World Affairs, and it's allowing, it allows everyone to get the basic understanding of what we do as a group. And this year, it's been an amazing time where we've actually been able to bring home multiple gavels, which is actually first place in a committee of 30 to 40 people. We've also brought in excellent delegation and Superior Delegation Awards. We brought in honorable mentions. Too many to count, to be honest, because I can't even list all of them off from the top of my head. From the spring competition, we also had the fantastic opportunity of allowing some of our students to chair the events, which is basically being the judge of the room and assigning points and making sure that the procedure is going correctly, debate is flowing, and everything is working according to plan. This year was actually the first year for the CLIMEN Conference, which is Cleveland International Model UN hosted by St. Edwards, and it's new. Basically, it's something that has never done before, and it brings together both the American-style system and the England-style system of Model UN. And it was a great opportunity to bring some of our students there first time, and we actually brought home two more gavels for first place, and we brought home two team awards in this competition. So we had a fantastic first time, and we're hoping to do it again with an even larger group next year. And then, the cream of the crop, basically, for Model UN right now is our international conference in Chicago, and we've been going there for three years now, thanks to Mr. Miller's support, and same with the board. And here, you are actually bringing in over 2,000 delegates at one time in almost 40 committees. You have delegates from Mexico, Canada, Morocco, and even Tunisia, all coming into this conference to compete in the same style. And as Lexi said before, they offer even better and more advanced committee sessions, like the crisis. So this year, we had both like a present-day timeline and we had a past timeline, which was set in 2003, so you could choose which one you wanted to do, but it was set basically on the brink of the Iraq War. And so we had delegates in the Iraq Cabinet. We had delegates in the U.S. Cabinet, both present and past. We actually had delegates in the Senate and alongside our regular Model UN committees. And, which hasn't been done before, we brought home another two gavels, first place in their room, and we brought home four committee awards, along with an actual conference award being the best among those 2,000 delegates. So it was a very fantastic year, and we're hoping to go back again next year and bring even more people. And I'll hand it off to Lexi to talk about our future projections.
So like Trevor said, we had a very, very successful year for Model UN last year, especially for Mennar High School Model UN. The amount of awards we brought in, along with the things that we learned from our international experiences, have been simply unparalleled in past years. But this year, with the support of the board and Mr. Miller especially, we're really looking forward to adding two more things to our schedule. The first of this is a Mennar High School-sponsored Model UN conference. Now, what we hope to do with this is first provide Mennar High School students, again, the opportunity to chair. This gives us the opportunity to see what it's like to be on the administrative side of the United Nations and hopefully even expose us to some more of future career goals. On top of this, we hope to do something with our conference that no other conference in the area does, by creating crisis committees. At our conference, we hope to create a digital forum for which people can communicate during the conference and respond to real-world events and crises that occur as the conference is going on. In doing this, we hope to showcase some of Mennar's new technological advancements, and on top of this, we hope to create a more interactive and realistic experience for delegates that they really don't get anywhere else. Now, the second thing we're very excited about is the addition of a third international conference to our schedule in Washington, D.C. This is going to be held from March 2nd through the 5th, and this Washington's Model UN conference is actually even more prestigious and bigger than Chicago's. Here, they have committees ranging from the National Basketball Association to the Provisional Government of Russia, so there's really something for everybody. And in going here, we once again hope to encourage a true international perspective rather than one simply centered on the United States. Now, to make this all possible, we want to just say thank you to Mr. Miller and Mr. Wade especially, and also to the Mennar Schools Foundation. They've made this all possible. With everything we've gone to them, we've received unconditional support, financing. They've helped to offset these costs greatly, and we truly couldn't do it without them. So we'd like to thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Well done.
And to all those who aren't graduating seniors, I hope to see you guys there next year. We definitely could use you, and just come to the first meeting, actually, which is tomorrow after school.
All right. Thank you.
At this time, I think we're going to take a five-minute break, so that if you would like to leave and not return, you may, or you may come back and hear the business part of the meeting. Thank you. Five minutes.
Tomorrow, you return.
We're going to go back in session.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Porter will now give us an update on the party and food guidelines for the coming school year.
Good evening again, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to share with you some guidelines that have been developed, mostly relevant for our elementary schools, that help to better support our Board Policy 6.49 on students with food allergies. Over the past few years, there's been a dramatic increase in students with food allergies in the schools, most noticeably in our elementary schools. This mirrors the dramatic spike that the medical profession acknowledged throughout the nation, even though there have not been clear answers why. The guidelines were needed because each elementary school in Mentor has tried the best way possible to keep our students safe, especially during three traditional holiday parties held at Halloween, Christmas, and Valentine's, as well as for birthday treats. However, we needed some supporting guidelines to make these events even safer and more consistent across the district. To build the guidelines, a committee was formed and has worked throughout the year to develop these. The committee included administrators, nurses, parents, and our food service director. The guidelines will take effect at the start of the 16-17 school year. The main shift that we agreed to make, that is easier said than done, is to focus more on these occasions as special events, holidays, or traditions that include fun and memorable activities, while putting less emphasis on food consumption. While the guidelines are too lengthy to detail all of them tonight, I did want to mention a few important examples. For students with birthdays, we are inviting parents to bring in non-food treats instead of supplying food items, which would no longer be allowable. We have even supplemented the guidelines with a suggested list of non-food ideas for parents. This would eliminate the chance of items coming in, like cupcakes or candy, which we know pose health risks to some of our students. On the days of those traditional holiday parties, bottled water would be the only allowable beverage. The food treats would be limited to only those that are individually factory-sealed, prepackaged, and those foods could not contain the eight most common allergens. Again, we provided as a supplement to the guidelines, a list of items that would fit the new, safer criteria. While there are other new guidelines, these are some of the more notable ones that make sense from a safety and enforcement standpoint. Before school resumes in the fall, we will also show all district staff a short video from the Food Allergy and Research Education Group that does an excellent job highlighting the increase in allergies nationally and what schools can do at all levels to help with this reality. The video will heighten the awareness of student allergies for all of our employees, including those who work with students at the upper levels. We will also ask our PTAs and PTSAs to show the video in the fall. The guidelines seem like a small adjustment compared to our district's overall mission and values, but I realize some of the changes will alter many of the food traditions in the schools and may even upset those who envision some of the old-fashioned food treats at the children's events. However, it was the right time to put these guidelines together, and doing so in the interest of safety makes it well worth it. I will be reviewing the guidelines this Friday with the PTA and PTSA presidents, who were aware the changes were coming. I will then share these with the whole district staff and with parents in the district prior to the end of the school year. That way, everyone can plan next year's events with plenty of notice. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Madam President, members of the board, I'm recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to Certified Personnel, Agenda Items C2 through C4, all related to human resource matters, and Agenda Item D.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wilson, please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Toddle?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes my part of tonight's agenda.
Is there any business that needs to be discussed at this time? Mr. Wilson, do you have any business?
No.
No? The legislative report, please.
Before I turn it over to Mr. Miller to give us a synopsis of how this truancy House Bill, Senate Bill 410, impacts schools across Ohio, I'd like to just read from the first three paragraphs. So the Ohio House Education Committee recently passed House Bill 410, which would make changes to the truancy and compulsory school attendance laws. The Ohio Senate has also been looking at truancy and zero-tolerance policies. It is anticipated the Senate will include their changes in additions in House Bill 410 when the bill is before them. The current version of 410 would prohibit a school district or school from suspending, expelling, or removing a student from school due to unexcused absences. The bill, instead, requires the establishment of an absentee intervention team for students who are habitually truant, absent without legitimate excuses, excuse, for 30 or more consecutive hours, 42 or more hours in one school month, 72 or more hours in a school What's interesting, I want to close by saying, the membership of each intervention team will vary based upon the needs of each student, but must include one representative from the child's school district, another representative from this child's school district or school who knows the child, and the child's parent or the child's guardian. So, seems like a step in the right direction. We're probably already in that direction, but I've asked Mr. Miller to provide us somewhat of a comparison of where we are today and the need for this.
Thank you, Mr. Toddle. You made some great points and stole a lot of what I was going to talk about, but that's okay. I'll hit a couple more things. There's been some further legislation on this bill that would require the establishment of the absentee intervention team, like what you talked about. The state has changed the concern in ours, so it would be with or without a legitimate excuse for 38 or more hours in one school month, or 65 hours in a school year. So they've already made some adjustments to it. Also requires a school district to make at least three meaningful, good-faith attempts to secure participation of the student's parents, guardian, or custodian, guardian ad litem, or temporary custodian, within seven school days after those trigger hours and not days have been met. And obviously, there's reporting requirements for us to the Department of Education. There'll also be a complaint filed in juvenile court, similar to what there is now, but it's going to take us slightly a little longer to get there, and it's supposed to be seen as a matter of last resort. The Board of Education, State Board of Education, excuse me, needs to develop a model policy that coincides with whatever the legislative change is going to be. And also, parents, guardians, or custodian of the child must also provide, could be penalized in the sum of more than, of not more than $500, as seen by the court. So that's a, adds a little bit of teeth to what you just shared with us. But it has been, BASS has been taking a look at it, and it's something that we're going to have to make some adjustments with, especially with the absentee intervention team that we'll have to create. So.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any?
Yes.
Mr. Miller, does this impose any additional cost, or do we have personnel that can handle these duties?
I don't think it's going to cause us to increase staffing, per se, but it'll give us more to do in terms of the absentee intervention team. We have point people in buildings now that do that, so it'll add a little bit more to the plate, yes.
Thank you.
I find that interesting that they added that fine, that $500 by court. It was perhaps, I don't recall the number of years ago, but one of our state senators proposed a charge to the parents who did not attend the parent conference. I believe it was $50, and it was going to be left to the school boards to levy that and collect it and manage that.
I remember that.
So this is now elevated to $500, but it's a more serious truancy. Something needs to be addressed.
Yeah, and it's a little bit of a two-headed monster for us, because when the kids are younger, it's hard to penalize a kindergartner for not coming to school, right? And when they're in high school, it's a little bit different story.
I'll share a personal story with you. This is, it just comes up every now and then. When I moved from Cleveland to Willoughby Eastlake School System, let's just say I had a hard time adjusting with the new fifth graders, although I did catch on, but I cut school. And it wasn't until Arthur Holloway, the principal of McKinley School, called my parents and said, "Tommy's not coming to school." My dad said to me, "Tommy, you're going to school, right?" "Yeah, I do." He said, "No, we have to go down and see the principal." Well, the principal, lucky for me, okay, he told my parents, "We're going to have to hold Tommy back." Well, my dad spoke up and said, "Wait a minute. My son's getting As and Bs. He's ahead of the class in math, science. How can you hold him back?" So Arthur Holloway said, "We won't hold him back, but he needs to come to school." So from that point on, I became one of those students who attended school all the time. I never missed, faked a headache, cut class. But I wanted to share that with you, because it does work sometimes if the children respond. It wasn't I was a bad kid. Just my personality didn't click with the suburbs versus inner-city Cleveland. So it's interesting. So truancy is close to my heart, so I just wanted to share that with you.
Do we still have the board policy where your grade can be affected by your attendance?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. I didn't know. Okay. I just wondered, because that would help, you know what I mean, getting them to school?
And, you know, and everything everybody in this room knows this and realizes this, there's a lot of factors as to why kids don't want to come to school, and it's just not wanting to be at school. So, you know, it's not always a one-size-fits-all, and I think everybody realizes that.
Yes, very much so. Suspension for non-attendance seems a good sign. So it's nice if the legislature sees it that way, too.
Right.
Oh, and by the way, Arthur Holloway. Oh, and by the way, Arthur Holloway, then he moved up to Eastlake Junior High, and he was my principal there. I did a little mischief, and he said, "Tom, you got a choice. I tell your dad or you take a swat." I'm not going to tell you what happened out of that. Then when I went to high school, he was, Eastlake North is the principal. I said, "Tommy, how's it going?" "Come to school." I wasn't a bad kid. I never missed a day after the discipline.
Mr. Wilson, would you like to follow that with the Chief Financial Officer's report recommendations?
Well, I can certainly follow it. I'm not sure I can top it. I recommend that the Board of Education accept the financial statements for the month of April 2016 and have them placed on file for audit.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommend the Board of Education approve the investments as presented in Exhibit 7-B.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommend the Board of Education approve the appropriation modifications listed in Exhibit 7-C.
So moved.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
It's recommend the Board of Education approve the supplemental appropriations listed in Exhibit 7-D.
So moved. Second.
I would like to make one note that we discovered after the advance agenda was distributed that an adjustment was necessary to the summer cares program budget. We did increase salary and benefits for a revised total of $118,460. Those were included in your final Board Doc materials.
All right. It's been updated in Board Doc?
Yes.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And it's recommend the Board of Education approve the student activity purpose, goals, and budgets presented in Exhibit 7-C.
So moved.
Mr. Shaw?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go on.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And at this time, I'd like to officially present the Fiscal Officer Certificate certifying that notes that we will be asking you to authorize have an expected useful life of at least 12 years. This is a necessary requirement before the Board can enter into borrowing funds. These are the eighth of 10 note renewals for permanent improvements that were begun eight years ago to accelerate the repairs and maintenance of our building. The new principal amount will be $390,000. So having presented the Fiscal Officer Certificate, I request that the Board of Education authorize the renewal of school improvement notes as presented in Exhibit 7-G.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And that completes my items tonight.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? Or new business? The second hearing of the public? Do we have executive session? There will be no executive session tonight.
If I may just confirm that I believe everyone's indicated their schedules would permit a special board meeting on May 31st at 6:00 P.M. I just want to confirm that. The purpose of the meeting is twofold: to discuss future revenue needs and how to move forward with the community's support, the new operating levy, and to adopt the May update of the five-year forecast. So if you would be kind enough to confirm that we are a go-to meet, we'll post the appropriate notice.
Date and time one more time?
6:00 P.M.
On the 31st.
On the 31st, yes.
May 31st at 6:00 P.M.
Location?
Our building, the Cardinal Conference Room.
And that was changed from the 14th, correct?
Correct.
Got it. Works.
Still good for me.
You said we're at the Cardinal Meeting Room?
Yes. Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. A motion for adjournment, then?
So moved.
And please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.